Confusing pain too, because not only was I working, I took my coin from the special office today. And they made it nice and perfect, so they had to keep it cold at night. And I had to get, I had to get no, I got a ride deal. And I got another lucky to come and pick me up, take me to get in the car. Yeah, the one that's smaller than I messed up, I had to, I had to get from the. I've got my coin, man. I'm good, man. First, he probably still hurting from the, he probably still hurting from the, the lashings, the tongue lashings I put on him.
I'd like to call to order the planning commission meeting for August the thirteenth, twenty twenty five. It is now two oh one. Can I get a roll call, please?
Susan Dennis.
Present.
Shirley Laws.
Present.
Annette Piot.
Present.
Okay, we have a forum present. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none. Can I get approval of the June eleventh, twenty twenty five minutes and July ninth, twenty twenty five minutes?
I moved to approve the June eleventh meeting minutes.
And, uh, you weren't here for the, for the eleventh. So for the eleventh, I was second. And so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now for the July ninth.
Make the motion, July ninth meeting be approved.
Okay, and I will second that one also. All right? Okay, so now, new business, sketch plan. All right, turn it over to our planning director.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes. Uh, good afternoon. Um, I think there may be one or two new people in here. Uh, what I want to make sure everybody's clear on today, we have three sketch plans. And for these submittals, there's really, it's an inform, informal submission, and we invite informal discussion about these plans as we go through them. Um, and the order we typically do in the planning commission is that I will review, give an overview of the project, discuss some zoning concerns or considerations, talk about some planning issues as well, pass it on to the applicant to make a presentation, and then have the city engineer follow up on that. And then we'll invite any comments from the public or from the planning commission as well. But again, it's an informal discussion. So today we have three, like I mentioned. The first one is at O West Seventh Street, so that zero West Seventh Street. It's in the R three medium density residential district. The applicant is the Chester Community Improvements Project, also known as CCIP. And the proposal is to re-subdivide, re-subdivide three existing parcels on the site of the former Pulaski School into a twenty-one lot residential subdivision with nine sets of single-family semi-detached dwellings, which are also known as side-by-side twins, and three single-family detached dwellings. Should also mention that this is also in the transit-oriented development overlay district, which is supposed to encourage higher density development, uh, and make it, which is because it's near the Highland Avenue Septa Station. As far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan because it's revitalizing underutilized land through medium-density infill housing, creating diverse housing options and encouraging walkability near Hi, the Highland Avenue Station. So before I go much thorough, much further, I'm just gonna show you in photographs the site, which the applicant may also have as far as background information. Here, you're seeing the zoning map, where the red star is, if you can see it, um, is the location of the site. The dotted black line is the TOD boundary, and the orange where that dot is, the R three district. Here is a aerial photograph from just before the school was demolished. You can see it on the right, which I'm gonna grab my cursor here. Over here, to the east, and then to the west is where the future or the existing, I should say, access community center is located. So this is roughly three and a half years ago. This is literally four weeks ago, July twenty-first, uh, twenty twenty-five. You can see that, uh, the community center is working on their expansion for their gym that were reviewed earlier this year, actually last year. Um, but I also want to point out in this aerial image, both these aerial images, the curb cut that was basically a front entrance to the school, um, that didn't align exactly with Harwick, but was used as a driveway, um, off of James Street and West Seventh Street here. So just keep that in mind as we go through a discussion on this. There, you can see a remnant of that curb cut. And again, we can come back to that. Here's some photographs. This is looking from Harwick Street south of the site, looking north towards, there's the playground existing today for the community access center. Here's the site we're talking about today. This is looking east on West Seventh Street. To the left is the site. There is that curb cut I just showed you on the aerial photograph. This is looking west, um, from the alley, which is, I'm forgetting the name of it, it's, go back to it.
James.
Uh, no, it's not James, it's, uh, because of the U.
Oh, U.
Um, I'm embarrassed, I'm forgetting it. Grace, 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 that's why it's called Grace Manor, exactly, thank you. Um, so that's Grace Manor to the, to the right here. And we're winding around the site. This is at the northeast side of the site, looking towards down James here. Grace Street is right here where the cursor is. And you can see the site is pretty flat, it's probably the range of slopes from five percent to two percent. It starts out, little steep, flattens out, and then drops out just a little bit. But five percent, two percent is really a flat site. This gives you a good idea what James Street looks like today, roughly. It's narrow, it's barely an alley, but it acts like an alley for the residents that exist on Ninth Street. Here's an image looking east on James Street, we're, we're west of the northern part of Harwick. Here's the fencing for the community access center, and here is the site. Couple more images. Here's one looking south from the Harwick intersection with James. And then this is looking south from Harwick, and you can see that, um, the fence line for the community access center is almost the center line of Harwick Street, the existing Harwick Street alignment. Then we have the site plan I have up online here. Here is the twenty-one units being proposed, or, uh, yep, twenty-one, uh, units. West Seventh Street, here is a new Harwick Street being proposed, a new Grace Manor Street being proposed. Here is existing Grace Street. Here is James Street on the north, and then there is an alley that connects the new Harwick Street and the Grace Street. And just for reference for everybody, I also have the, the landscape plan, which includes the lighting and the proposed grading. So let me just go through, uh, I've highlighted seven of my comments that were in my review letter, um, and we may want to touch upon these later as we go through this. As far as allowed uses, single-family detached dwellings, single-family semi-detached dwellings are permitted in the R three district, so there's no issue there. And we did not find any issue on this sketch plan with the dimensional requirements for this district, although we did ask the applicant, if they do submit a land development plan, to just create a bulk use table, or bulk dimensional table for each parcel individually. We wanted to commend the, the applicant for incorporating front porches into the site design, that's for all units, and we do appreciate the narrow setbacks along West Seventh Street, which resulted in an alley in the rear for rear loading, uh, which we think, from a planning perspective, uh, makes that West Seventh Street more pedestrian friendly. That was comment six. I'm skipping to comment eight in my letter. Relates to the alley, uh, as depicted, as depicted on the sketch plan, it appears to provide adequate access to the proposed lots and complies with the intent of the city's zoning ordinance. So that's really just indicating that the alley, uh, as the proposed one in the middle of the site is a good design decision, um, so Seventh Street, as I said, is more walkable. Something that was just distributed recently was a comment on the trees and the landscaping. The Shade Tree Commission did provide a memo, and the planning commission has that in front of it now, um, and they had a few comments, uh, about specifics, and I asked the planning commission, or the Shade Tree Commission, to look at this because the applicant did provide a, um, landscape plan, but you can consider these comments informal. One of the comments was just the planting pits should be sufficiently sized, they should consider planting trees in the backyards of the homes, and consider diversifying the plantings to include more than just two species on the site. And then there was another comment about the planting detail, showing that the trees, as they're settled, or shown on the plan, um, are being planted too low, and the shoulder of the root ball should be above the ground level. All really good comments and something for the applicant to consider as they move forward. My final two comments are from the general comments, uh, comment ten and comment eleven on the review letter. One was about incorporating common open space. So in our subdivision ordinance, which Ron will talk about a little bit as well, we talk about a certain, if there's a certain number of residential units proposed, that there should be a common space identified. We realize that if there is a common open space, it's way over here on the west of Harwick Street, but it did not look like there was any real program for this as recreational space. We'd like to just talk about this a little bit, possibly today, on, on what we could do to, to improve the, the common open space or come up with some alternatives. And then my last comment I want to highlight relates to Harwick Street. I'm gonna go back to the aerial. At, the proposal as it is, um, in what it's showing with the new Harwick Street, it doesn't line up with the existing Harwick Street. It's offset, and this could potentially be an issue for access by emergency vehicles and create some awkwardness for travel through and around the site. This is something we'd also want to talk to, and we actually think it may relate to the common open space situation, um, and that could be something else we can talk about a little bit today, rather than me getting into the details of that. But at this moment, I would ask the planning commission to ask me if they have any questions, and if not, we can have the applicant make a presentation. Sure or not? Please.
I just need to disclose to the planning commission that I am the executive director for the Chester Community Improvement Project, in which this project is our, our organization's project.
Oh.
Which one? I need to disclose that I am the executive director for the Chester Community Improvement Project, and this project is a project of Chester Community Improvement, in which I am, uh, overseer as the organization.
All right. Okay, thank you. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Fritz? If not, if there's someone here from the organization would like to speak on behalf, you state your name and give us an address.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm, uh, Mike Galante, I am the, uh, engineer at Design the Plans. Uh, my office address is three thirty-four West Front Street, Media, PA. Uh, I am the owner of MG Engineering Associates LLC. So what we, you know, I think Paul did a great overview of the project, I think he really explained, um, you know, what we're proposing to do, and, um, you know, we've also had some conversations before the meeting to discuss the project, so as I go through our presentation, I'll, I'll touch on some of the comments that, I, I might reiterate some of the items that, uh, Paul mentioned, but I'll also, you know, discuss the project and in a little, in a little different detail, and talk about some of the comments that, that we received from the planner and the engineer. So the first, um, we, we prepared this PowerPoint presentation, this project is the Grace Manor Homes, proposed twenty-one lot subdivision. Uh, there's numerous partners on this project, you have Chester Economic Development Authority, uh, CCIP, and then City of Chester as well. City of Chester, uh, was the applicant submitting it to the board, they, they actually signed the application, uh, for the sketch plan submission, and we'll have Lisa Gaffney come up and, and explain the relationship of how this project, project will get built and move forward. So if we can please go to the next slide. All right, so you have some existing conditions photos, I think we kind of touched on that, Paul, you did a great job with the photos, much better than mine. Um, I think, I think your photos look a lot nicer than mine, but, you know, depending on what kind of angle you're looking at, um, when you're doing your presentation. So the next one is the aerial image. So what we have here is an aerial image of the site, you see the access center, you see we have the vacant lot right now, which was formerly Pulaski School, and just to give a little background on that, uh, the city, uh, received grant funding, demolished the, uh, Pulaski School, and in preparation of this project. So that Pulaski School, Pulaski School was demolished around twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, um, and if you look at the access center, while all this demolition was happening, uh, the access center came in and they actually did their subdivision, their original subdivision for the access center, where they received a piece of the property where Harwick Street, uh, the paper street of Harwick Street was. So that kind of goes into some of the disjointedness of the roadway, how it doesn't actually align, which I'll explain that further on as we go through the presentation. But just to kind of touch base on a couple more items, uh, we did do a full environmental review for the project. Uh, this project is funded with community development block grant funds, uh, CPF funding, uh, there's obviously, there are probably a few other funding sources I'm missing, but, um, the intent would be to construct initially, um, and stop me if I'm wrong, but ten of, uh, is it?
Phase one.
Ten of the residential homes with the infrastructure, and then phase in the other ones over time. Uh, so that is the current plan for the project. We are gonna, um, and, and through the environmental review process, I'll note that we checked the floodplains, we checked the wetlands maps, we look at traffic impacts, uh, as far as noise on the residential developments, and, and the residential homes are designed, will be designed with appropriate means to mitigate any noise, because you do have the train tracks there, and you also have, you know, some state highways, Highland Avenue and West Ninth Street, uh, adjacent to the site. If we can go to the next, um, and that, right here, you have, uh, the, the plan that you're looking at now is the demolition, I call it demolition plan, but it's existing conditions plan, showing you what's on the site today, and right now, it's a grass lot, which was formerly Pulaski School, which was demolished, like I said, around twenty-two, twenty-three. If we head to the next slide, uh, we have the twenty-one lot subdivision plan with the residential homes. These homes were, have been coordinated with a home, modular home company, so what we plan on doing with the projects is we're gonna construct these plans modular, we're working on, currently, you know, not myself, but CCIP is working on agreements with the home builder, um, to kind of, to construct the homes, and we've been working on different models and options, and we've, we have a, we have an architect onboard, we have mechanical, electrical engineers, structural, so that, once we get through the land development process, you know, we'll have plans ready to go for construction, to go through building permit. Um, and the modular company, we're working on getting them onboard as well. Uh, but what we're proposing is, you know, we have, initially, I'll just give you a little background, this project went through a bunch of iterations. Uh, there were, there were numerous iterations that we looked at, and I think Paul kind of touched on the pedestrian friendliness. When we first started working on the design of the project, we originally were gonna have driveways right off of West Seventh, and it was determined that it made more sense to kind of match the homes on West Seventh, there are no driveways on West Seventh Street. So we wanted to match that existing character to neighborhood, and that's where you got the alley to the rear. Um, and, and, and we think that actually, in, in a way, it eliminates all the curb cuts, it does make it much more pedestrian friendly. Um, we also have two roadways proposed, we have the, uh, like what we're calling Grace Manor Street, which is just there for name only, I mean, that's, that's just the name we put on the plan, just to, you know, kind of get it submitted, I mean, that name is not set in stone, and then we have Harwick Street, which is kind of offset, and there's, there's a reason why it was offset like that, there are two reasons. The first reason was, we were trying to avoid relocating PICO and Comcast and Verizon Utilities, which could take some time, and the other reason is, the more, you know, and, and, and this is something that we were willing to work with, obviously, the planning commission and the engineers and the board on, is the, the more we align Harwick Street and, and make it a straight run coming down from Ninth, is when traffic backs up on Ninth, everyone's gonna be cutting down, and they're gonna be flying through, and it could create somewhat of a traffic hazard. So there is a little bit of thought there when you think about, you know, how that's gonna operate, uh, understanding how traffic can back up on Ninth Street. Obviously, you know, being the engineer for the city for twelve years, uh, I know that area very well, and it does tend to back up at certain times of day, and people are always looking for a cut through. Um, so we, we want to obviously implement measures that are gonna mitigate the cut through, but also, we also want to have that open space area that, um, you know, is, is not, we want to, we want to make sure we figure out who's gonna own that open space area, and we're willing to shift it over if that's what the board would, is so inclined, and, and, and the planners and the engineers, or if that's what they would like us to do, we can definitely shift it over. Um, and then finally, um, just to touch a little bit more on the project, we did go through, I don't know if you want me to go through it now, but we did go through the engineer's review letter, a majority of the comments, or, I would say at least ninety percent of them, or will comply, um, or we're in the process of getting permits, say from Delcora, or the Water Authority, or PICO, et cetera. Uh, there are some comments that we have questions about, but I don't know if you want me to go into them right now, or, yeah, you want me to? Okay, yeah, sure. So I would just, you know, just reviewing the letter, I would say number six is the first one, so, uh, it states that the applicant does not indicate if the proposed Harwick Street, Grace Manor Street, and alleyway are proposed to be dedicated to the city or remain private, we would, as part of this project, we would dedicate the roadways, that would be the intent of the project. Right now, James Street to the north of the site is actually within the ownership of former, when it was former Pulaski School, that was all owned, that, that property line actually encompasses that alleyway. So we would want to dedicate that alleyway back to the city, because when we build these residential homes, it would be, in our experience, it's difficult to have the homeowners maintain the alleyways and the roadways. So we would definitely want to dedicate them. Um, the, ch-ch-ch, there was the comment about, uh, the vacated right-of-way at Harwick Street, and like I said, we can, we can shift the, the, uh, the driveway over a little bit to the left, um, and also look at appropriate traffic calming measures, if, if that's so what the board wants us to do. Uh, but we're willing to, you know, obviously work on that as, when we come in for preliminary, uh, final submission. Um, there was a comment fourteen, it talks about ADA ramps should be provided, which also permit access to the south side of West, West Seventh Street at intersections and to West Ninth Street via Harwick Street. I, I just had a question, I wasn't sure, reading that, I wasn't sure where we were looking to put the handicap, the handicap, uh, ramps at, is that to, like where Harwick, where the jog at Harwick is? Or is, are you talking about where we cross at Grace Manor Street? I, I wasn't really sure where you meant by that one.
Anywhere those sidewalk is crossing, maybe, maybe, regulations.
Okay, um, yeah, and then we do have, so we can obviously work on the pedestrian traffic plan if we wanna, if we wanna add, um, and, and that's where I guess I would defer to you on where you want me to add them. Um, I think we provide adequate crossings, I mean, obviously, we have an ADA ramp at Grace Street, we have an ADA ramp at Grace Manors, at Grace, the Grace Street alleyway portion, then there's Grace Manor, we have ADA ramps there for that crossing, and then if you go further to the, it's not shown on the plan, but further to the west on West Seventh, there is an ADA ramp that crosses, uh, the roadway to get you to the other side. I don't know if you want an intermediate crossing somewheres in between that.
So if, if there's sidewalk on Harwick Street, it's not shown in this plan, uh, south of the site, they should need an ADA ramp.
We'll work with the, the design engineer, but anywhere where there's sidewalk that needs to be connected for crossing streets, you need ADA ramps, and what is not shown on this plan is Harwick Street, south of Seventh Street.
Yeah, we can incorporate that in, um, for that handicap ramp, and if we want to add a crossing at Grace Manor Street, um, we surely can, um, you know, it's not, that shouldn't be a problem, to add that in, um, if, if, you know, so desire. The, uh, ch-ch-ch, fifteen, sixteen will comply, um, and then, now I'm in the subdivision and land development comlet, comments. There was another comment about aligning Harwick Street, which, like I said, we can work on that comment. There is, uh, a comment about the alleyways, we intend the alleyways to be one-way, uh, one-way direction due to the width to meet the code in the, uh, city ordinance, and we can work on which way makes more sense from a traffic, uh, standpoint. Um, the right-of-way comment, that's, that kind of ties into Harwick, which we can, we can work on that with the engineer, so that's a will comply. Um, and then there's a, there's also comment eight on subdivision land, land development, and it says, "An applicant for any land development or subdivision shall be required to widen pavement or improve any budding street, and provide additional right-of-way as needed to meet current city standards." Can you, um, if, are you, are you alluding to, I, I would say, just based on the comments I received from the Water Authority, the Water Company wants us to loop the water main, so we're gonna end up, uh, basically repaving, re, a majority reconstruction in James Street alleyway area, that would get reconstructed. Is there any other area you're thinking of?
Yeah, the, the current condition of Grace Street is very poor, it acts more like an alleyway than a public street, um, and James Street is less than poor, uh, needs to be redone, but there.
Well, James Street's gonna get torn up from the water main.
And then the, the intersection at James and Harwick Street, you know, we have to think about emergency services and fire trucks, how they can get through the site, and so, as you develop the site, thinking about the largest fire truck and truck turning templates, making sure that works.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's not a problem, I can run, we can run the fire truck template. Uh, so I guess based on that comment, you would want us to repave Grace Street, James Street's gonna get redone automatically, so you're just asking us to do a resurfacing on Grace Street? Is that what you're thinking?
Take a look at the existing curb on, as well.
Oh, you want us to redo the curb?
On both sides?
That's what the ordinance requires. Now, if the applicant wants to submit a waiver request letter with justifications why they want partial or full relief, that's their prerogative. We're deciding the way the ordinance reads.
The traffic impact, so, so we, we'll, and we'll work on that, and, you know, as we, you know, we'll, we'll, if we think, you know, we'll go do an assessment, if we think there's some areas that warrant a waiver, we'll, we'll submit them and let the board take that into consideration. There, um, is a comment about, um, the traffic impact study, which we can provide a trip generation statement, but I could tell you that twenty-four homes is gonna be, you know, twenty-four trips. Uh, it's really, wouldn't reach the level of five hundred, but I can, I can easily prepare a statement on that, that wouldn't be an issue. Um, number eleven talks about recreation fees, uh, for. Number 11 talks about recreation fees for residential, for subdivision and land development. And I think we would be asking, given the fact that, you know, this is, you know, I guess, a somewhat of a quasi-city redevelopment agency project, we would ask for a waiver from that requirement. Especially to, to piggyback on that, we are next to the access center, and this project was kind of in line with that. So we'll provide a waiver letter to kind of talk about how this project came about, from the demolition Polaski School dedicating portions of the property to the access center, which in generally, in itself, is a big landscape, a big recreation component. So we would be requesting a waiver for that one. And then finally, I don't know if I had anything else that I really had. I guess we'll work with the, number 18 under subdivision land development, we'll work with the city on lighting of the alleyways, if that is determined that that's something that they want to have done in this case, for this project. And then finally, I'll direct you to Paul's comment about commending the plan. And that's all I have. No, I'm kidding. That's all I have for today.
The fire stuff are 48 to 50, if you were to want to.
Okay. I'll use that one, yep. And if I got to widen out, when we do shift, when we shift it over, if I got to widen the radius to make it work better, I can do that. Yep.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Madison? Thank you, Mr. Glanti.
Thank you, Madden Chairperson. We provided our engineering review letter as a sketch plan. It's actually a memo, apologize, dated August 5th, 2025. We think it's a great project. It's laid out well, we support the project. Our biggest concerns at a sketch plan level really is Harwick Street and its alignment, as well as James Street's alignment. In a perfect world, the community center would have been thought out with this project, and Harwick Street would not have been vacated and would have been easy to go through as a through street. The Polaski School was still there when the community center Phase One came in. Apparently, Harwick Street, that section of right-of-way was vacated, and the community center took their half of the 60-foot right-of-way. So that's now part of the community center property. Can't undo that. But what we would prefer is not to create a no-man's land between the proposed right-of-way as it exists now and on the sketch plan, but shift it over so that a 60-foot public right-of-way would abut the community center property and not have a 30-foot wide strip of landscape buffer and an ownership issue. The alternative to that is to dedicate the land to the community center, let them take care of it. But on the community center property, they have a landscaping plan for buffer. So the applicant should consider those options and decide what they need to do. There is a utility pool and fire hydrant that would have to be relocated to shift it over. The bigger concern is really the geometry where Harwick Street meets James Street, which meets Harwick Street again. James Street should be one-way, but Harwick Street needs to be two-way. And making sure two-way traffic can get around that curve, and a fire truck can get around that curve, is something that they'll have to work out as they prepare their preliminary plans. We didn't get into any other detail, other than the sketch plan, stormwater management, sanitary sewer water. That will all come during the preliminary plan. But in general, it's a good project. This detail of Harwick Street just has to be sorted out. If there's specific questions about our review memo, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, it's a good project.
Any questions?
Of course not. Let me just share a little, I'll just share a little bit more information on Phase One. So if you look at the plan now, to the left, you'll see two, yeah, you'll see those along Seventh Street. Now, from the single one, go back to the middle, from the single, those two twins, the single, the other two sets of twins, right there, that L shape, and go back up towards Harvard Street. That's Phase One, those 10 houses. That will be Phase One, and then all the infrastructure will be done to allow the building of the remaining properties at some point in time, when we get more money. So that's initial to plan. Lisa can tell you a little bit more about the ownership of the land, but our intent was really never to have Harwick Street as a through street from Seventh to Ninth, because we all know what happens when you have something like that. And these are going to be, you know, probably homeowners, and the last thing we want is to have somebody flying through Harwick Street, you know, while people are sitting out there, or the kids out there playing. So our intent is to shift it, but not to necessarily have it go access on to Ninth. That's all I got.
Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Gaffney with the Chester Economic Development Authority, 1 Fourth Street. In terms of the ownership of the project, the land is currently owned by the City of Chester. It will be transferred, has been approved for transfer, to the Chester Redevelopment Authority. Chester Redevelopment Authority will enter into a redevelopment agreement with CCIP to construct the units as per the plans. And we will also have the Chester Economic Development Authority doing the first phase of the project. So we will be involved in all the infrastructure work that's described. And then at that point, we will transfer that over to CCIP, and they will build the units and then sell them to income-eligible homeowners. So all the homeowners have to be income-eligible, at or below 80% of area median income, since we have subsidy in all of these projects, which is why putting money in recreation is problematic, because we need to take our subsidy dollars that are for housing and use them directly for housing. So that's what we'll be doing in order to get this project done and build a neighborhood that we think people will continue to want to live in for the long haul, just like we did at Crozier Hills, that type of neighborhood that people will be proud of and want to continue to live in.
We did a project, also, we did a project over or off of 15th Street, which we call Arbor Estates. And it's right across the street from the Salvation Army. So these would look similar to those four houses that we built over there.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody else have any comments?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing the sketch plan in, I appreciate it. All right, the second sketch plan on our agenda is titled at 1724 West Third Street. It actually fronts on to Flower Street as well. And the proposal is to demolish an existing one-story, 1,200-square-foot commercial building, consolidate three lots, which are 1724 and 1728 West Third Street, and 1729 West Union Street into one lot, roughly 8,500 square feet, and construct a new three-story mixed-use building with one commercial space, 18 multifamily dwelling units, and 14 interior off-street parking spaces. Access to the parking is proposed from West Union Street. And just to go back to the number of units, there'd be 12 one-bedroom units proposed and six two-bedroom units. The one-bedrooms range from roughly just over 500 square feet to roughly 750 square feet. The two-bedrooms would be roughly 750 square feet, or a little bit larger, to 850 square feet. This is in the C2R zoning district. You can see where the red dot is. You can see, here's the bridge overpass, and here's where this red dot is, this is where the site is. The commercial building at 1728 West Third Street is currently a tire shop. The adjacent properties, including the land under State Route 322, are vacant, except for the parcel south of the projects at 1733 West Third Street, which includes, I would say, a renovated two-story apartment building, which also has a restaurant on the first floor. A project like this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, because it's revitalizing an underutilized piece of land through infill housing, also offering diverse housing options and encouraging walkability near West Third Street, which is a major corridor through the city and needs rehabilitation. Like the last project, I'm just going to go quickly through some photographs that I have available for reference. We're on Flower Street looking north. The site is right here to the northeast. Here's the tire shop. Obviously, here's 322 and the bridge. This is looking west. Site is here. There used to be a two-story building here that was demolished roughly a few years ago. This is a view south, if you will. Here's the tire shop. Here's roughly where the site is. And then here is the proposal. As I said, it's a three-story building. Where the glass on the first floor is, that's roughly where the commercial space would be. And then where these openings are is where the interior parking would be. And then the second and third floor is where the multifamily dwelling units would be located. Here's a floor plan of the building. This is the commercial space proposed. Obviously, you've got a stairwell and other walkway entrances for the apartments. This first floor again, this is where the parking is proposed, the off-street parking. And then I do have images of the floor plans. The difference between the colors is the one-bedroom and the two-bedrooms, so the lighter, you can see on the screen, are the one-bedrooms, the darker, other two bedrooms. Here's an image of the third floor, floor plan. So I have those available for discussion. I'll back up here and just talk about a few of my comments in the zoning letter. While this project is consistent with a comprehensive plan, if you note in my letter, there are a significant number of potential zoning issues that relate to this project, the way it's sited today. And part of that's just the limited scale of the site that the building's located on. So the use is allowed in the C2R, as far as the apartment dwelling. We are unsure at this point, and again, this is sketch plan, so it's an informal submittal, what the commercial space is, and we'd want to make sure that also complies with what is permitted in the C2R. So that's kind of an unknown at this point. As far as dimensional requirements, and this speaks to comment two here, it appears the proposal meets the dimensional requirements for minimum lot area, minimum lot width, building height, minimum front yard setback. But it does appear the proposal does not meet the requirements for density, rear yard setback, maximum percent building coverage, and maximum percent impervious coverage. And you can see in my comment, I've identified what the, where it does not meet our requirements. Moving on to page three of the memo that I provided to you on, I meant number four. We talk about off-street parking. The sketch plan proposes 12 one-bedroom units and six two-bedroom units, which equates to, per the zoning ordinance, 21 required off-street parking spaces. To note, the sketch plan only shows 14 off-street parking spaces, so they're short. Again, this is only addressing the parking, off-street parking requirements for the dwelling units. With the commercial space being unknown as far as use goes, that would also determine a parking count. So that has actually not been addressed with this application. But again, it's an informal submittal. Some other things that do not comply with the zoning ordinance. Related to off-street parking loading, it's the size of the parking spaces. And then the aisle width for these parking spaces is also quite narrow. Required by zoning is a 24-foot wide drive aisle for the parking spaces. This plan shows an aisle width of 17 feet 10 inches roughly, which is pretty significant under the required drive aisle width. Moving on to comment 10. For a future land development plan, if formally submitted, we'd also want to have clarification on the loading and unloading for the residential and commercial uses, and where that would be located. So we'd want that identified on the plan and accommodated. Moving on to a couple other important comments that I have in the memo. Item 15, as you know, there's a minimum of 10% of each lot should be landscaped, landscaping, trees, shrubs, and ground cover. The land development plan would have to confirm the extent of any proposed landscaping that meets these provisions. And again, this is a sketch plan, it did not reveal the 10%. In addition, when we have off-street parking, we also, as you know, require one tree per 10 new off-street parking spaces. So we'd have to see shade trees on the site related to the number of parking spaces ultimately proposed. Item 17, we'd want street trees as part of the project, of course. And then item 18, we'd want to know where any proposed garbage dumpsters and the screening of those dumpsters is taking place. They could be interior, which is fine, but we just need to know their location. And I think 19 kind of sums up my general concern with this project. I think it is a project that fits with what I think we desire in West Third Street, because it has mixed use, which is something that would really benefit the city. It just needs to be maybe a scale, or needs to minimize the zoning relief that would be needed to make it work. And that relates to the comment 19 that I have, that we recommend the applicant reevaluate the design to explore potential modifications that would reduce the number and extent of required zoning variances. Because the ones that we listed are, there's quite a few that would need to be addressed. And then one last comment related to that, and I know the applicant's aware of this. In addition to minimizing the zoning relief, we would encourage them to look at maybe expanding the property ownership to accommodate this project. There is publicly-owned land to the east. One is immediately adjacent, but there's a private parcel in between that, partially in between the publicly-owned parcel. So we would encourage the applicant to consider expanding their land ownership to make a project like this fit and comply with the zoning ordinance and our subdivision and land development ordinance. So I'm happy to take any questions about my memo before I pass it on to the applicant.
Any questions?
Do they currently, the proposed developer currently owns the other land now as a part of this project?
Yeah, there's three parcels. Good question. There's three parcels, and they own the parcels that are being shown, that are, that this development is shown on. Yep.
I'm aware of those other parcels you're talking about.
Are you? Yes.
Yeah, along the street area there.
Okay. If there's no questions, is there anyone here representing? Would you come forward, please? State your name and your address. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Raiki Stewart. I'm from Chester here, born and raised.
Yeah, yeah, Mike.
Hello? All right. My name is Raiki Stewart, from Chester, 1300 Townsend Street, born and raised here. I own the tire shop, Quick's Tires, on Third and Flower Street. My back got bad over the years, so I got to get out of the tire business. So I decided to try to build this. It's my first time, I've never done this before. It's a lot of things, obstacles that I got, hurdles that we got to get across, but we prepared. As far as the variances for the parking, we're in a process where I put the application in to try to get those parcels of land that are available from the city. We're waiting to get, waiting to hear anything back. Right, we're waiting to hear it back. If we're able to acquire those parcels of land, that would reduce the majority of the variances. It would give us more room, it'd give us more parking room. That's pretty much our major problem, the space.
What is your proposed commercial use? What are you supposed to put in there?
We're still proposing. Like, we're thinking of a coffee shop. I haven't had locked in on anything specifically yet, because after speaking with Mr. Fritz, with the eighteen units, with the size and everything that we have, he brought up to me that it might be better to go with senior, senior living, the building sixty-two and older. If we can't get the parking, if we can't get the, everything that we need.
You've got quite a few zoning hurdles, quite a few. And I don't think just buying the lots. I mean, buying the lots will take care of some of the parking issues, but not all of the zoning issues.
No, I know that. I know we're not gonna get rid of all of them, but that acquired space will help us greatly get rid of, reduce a lot of the zoning issues.
Well, with that parking plan, how many ADA parking did you plan on?
Excuse me?
ADA parking, disability, handicap parking.
Never even crossed my agenda, I'm sorry. That's something that we had to look into if we do the sixty-two or older.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's why I said that. And then my other question was about signage. Would you plan on putting some kind of sign up for, or do you think about signage?
For the streets?
No.
Or just location? Yes.
Okay, so that would give, again, through zoning, you know, for the signage. If you're gonna do signage, so you can get the proper sizing and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Okay? Any other?
Excuse me, I want, just to be clear. Are you saying like if I wanted to put Flower Street Apartments up there?
Whatever you wanted to call it.
That has to go through zoning also?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
It'd be a separate application.
Okay.
So that's something else to think about.
All right.
Also dumpsters. Where did you plan on putting your dumpsters?
He asked that too. That's in his comment.
Yeah, we never.
You ever thought about?
We haven't put that into the plans yet, whether we're gonna do it outside or inside or none of that.
Okay, that's gonna be a big.
Yes.
Issue too. All right. Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, from the engineer.
Okay, so we're ready now for Mr. Madison. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. We submitted our sketch plan review memo dated August fifth, 2025. Be happy to answer any questions. In general, we think there are a lot of subdivision land development obstacles also to overcome for this plan to move forward. We'd recommend to the applicant, if they do acquire additional land and/or if they do modify their plan, to come back as a sketch plan before they go through the full engineering process of preliminary design. The current, under a first-level parking, has access to West Union Street. And West Union Street is in very poor condition and basically needed to be set up for one-way traffic if it were to be used. And, you know, one of the things is that Flower Street is a state road, so any of the work to reduce, to remove the existing curb cuts will require a penned-out highway occupancy permit. Truck turning movements for fire safety. Generally, for multifamily, we're looking to have the largest fire truck be able to access all four sides. West Union Street is pretty prohibitive to any fire truck access. So those are really our concerns. And obviously, if the plan can be expanded with additional lots to provide more off-street parking and/or a bigger footprint to allow the interior parking to actually work in its current function. We kind of joked that we would restrict the parking to cars with sunroofs only, because that might be the only way to get in and out of the cars, the way it's laid out right now. But it needs some more work. That's all, unless you have any specific questions.
I don't have any. Do you have any questions?
No.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Take care.
Just, I would pick back on what Ron said for the applicant's sake. I think that is good advice. If you do end up acquiring more land, you can come back with another sketch plan that's just a little bit more advanced on this and you're. Come on up and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Brahim Farlow, address fifty-six eighty-two Morton Street, Philadelphia.
Sir, we cannot hear you.
Brahim Farlow, fifty-six eighty-two Morton Street, Philadelphia. I'm co-developing with Mr. Stewart. The question I had was, how do you cure the situation with the fire truck on Union Street?
Yeah, I understand that you've retained an architect for your building footprint. I suggest you hire a civil engineer that's well-versed in land development to come up with plans that meet the subdivision land development ordinance.
No, I understand that. I'm looking at a fire truck not being able to go through Union Street now, so what are you doing with that now if there was a fire there today?
You may be required to do improvements to Union Street to make your project feasible.
To Union Street itself?
Right.
Which, Union Street is owned by the city, correct? Are there funds available for situations like that? If developers are going to help the city?
The developer incurred those costs.
Say it again?
The developer incurred those costs.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. That's different. Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you. No problem.
Can I ask one question about the occupancy? Who are these units going to be for? Certain age or certain income bracket?
I'm trying to figure that one out.
Yeah.
The original eighteen units was for anybody. But after putting in a sketch plan and sitting down and speaking with Mr. Fritz, he's like, you know, with the size of them, this is before me trying to acquire the apartment, he's like, with the size of the units, they're only, I could only get sixty-two or older in there with the size of the apartments. So with the size, the architect made them. So that came into, that wasn't ever in my play, but once he brought that to my attention, it was okay. All right, so it was just another option that, he just gave me another option, basically.
And partly just to clarify on that, because the parking was reduced for units that are sixty-two and older, right, you have a reduced parking requirement.
All right, thank you.
Do you have a question?
Sure.
Is there anything specific that the city would want us to do?
Yeah, he just showed you there.
Yeah, I think, and related to our letter about the zoning and minimizing the zoning relief that you would be asking for, it would be also addressing what's in the city engineer's review letter.
Right.
And part of that is hiring a civil engineer to help you get through that process. I do agree with that recommendation as well.
Sorry, but I was asking as if like, is the city looking for any specific type of housing or anything specific that?
Part of the comprehensive plan is a diversity of housing, say, multi-generational. In my mind, you're proposing smaller units, and that is okay, because those are more affordable units, even though if they're not subsidized, which is fine. That is a needed, that's needed. And you'd be contributing to that on West Third Street, which is really a tough, in a tough position, and we're trying to make improvements as we go here. So housing, period, is good on West Third Street. But the size of your units, I think the scale of them is fine. You're just, again, you're at a density that doesn't meet the zoning requirements. So you just have to be careful with that.
It would be in your best interest also to have a meeting with the housing director, such as economic development authority or somebody like that, who is familiar with the comprehensive plans and they can help you sort of navigate what's in that particular plan at this time when it comes to the housing in the city of Chester.
Okay.
Yeah. And just continue to have discussions with city representatives. Okay.
You'll create a civil engineer? Have them look at both the comments with the letters that came from the engineer here that represents the city of Chester and our planning directors' memos. And they'll take all of that into account and incorporate our zoning requirements.
Okay.
They'll suggest, they should be able to suggest.
Okay.
Thank you. We appreciate you bringing the sketch plan in. Yep. All right. To the third project. Again, this is a sketch plan. And this is a project that's located on Delkor's property, way at the west end of the city along the Delaware River. It proposes demolish Delkor's existing control building, remove some existing parking spaces in order to construct a new addition to Delkor's maintenance and storage building. The construction includes a new fifteen thousand nine hundred square foot two-story building addition with a five thousand square foot third-floor option, a eighteen hundred square foot locker room addition, and an eleven thousand eight hundred square foot set of interior renovations. Site improvements include expanded off-street parking, ninety-seven off-street parking spaces total, and circulation areas with landscape islands and improved ADA accessibility. This project is located in the HIC zoning district. That's the Heavy Industrial Commercial Zoning District. And as you know, the intent of the HIC is to provide for suitable areas for a variety of industrial uses and compatible commercial uses. And as you know, too, the project is on Delkor's treatment plant campus, which is accessed by Harwick Street. And it's surrounded by railroad sidings to the north, to the east by the re-world Delaware Valley Waste Management Facility, also previously known as Covanta, to the south by the Delaware River, and to the west by vacant land under ownership of Monroe Energy. And just to be clear, this project is outside the one-hundred-year floodplain. I have a couple of images just for reference for the applicant. Images of the plans that they gave us. And then let me just go through a couple zoning comments. I only had a few that I thought were relevant. One is that the proposed use of office and warehouse is permitted in the HIC. The dimensional requirements seem to be met by this sketch plan. Moving on to comment item five. We just asked that the applicant, when submitting a formal land development plan, clarify how the proposed parking addresses the zoning requirements for expected number of visitors and expected employees. Just, we just need some clarification on that. Otherwise, my comments are pretty standard. Moving on to comment eleven. Just, I made a note, just like the last project, that for each ten new off-street parking spaces, one new deciduous street shall be planted. That meets one of our zoning requirements. We would like to have clarification on where any dumpsters would be proposed. And then finally, under general comments, and these are the comments I typically provide at this point in a project, if not later. This has a significant footprint, so a large roof. So we would encourage the applicant to consider some sustainable options. Could be green roofs, it could be a white roof, or it could be a mixture of that, or even including solar panels. Just a standard comment that we provide on large-scale projects like this. So in general, that's my memo, the major comments in my memo. I'm happy to take any questions before we ask the applicant to provide some more background.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
So if there's anybody here to represent this site, would you come forward and state your name and address? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Mike Alante, owner of MG Engineering Associates LLC. I'm here to, I'm here representing Delkor on the proposed building, control building improvements. Do you have the first slide?
I do. Hold on a second.
And then I also have with me Lavanya, the process engineer with Delkor. And she can also answer any questions that you may have regarding the operation, regarding the plans for the project as well as we move through our presentation. Lavanya, do you want to come up and give them your full name and address?
Good afternoon. I'm Lavanya Ramaswamy, process engineer at Delkor at thirty-two oh one West Front Street, Chester.
Thank you.
So, good afternoon. I'm just gonna give a brief overview of the project on our first slide, then I'll go through in further detail, talk about how we came to this point and what the actual timeframe is for us to get into construction. So Delkor's proposed an upgrade, their existing administrative and operational space. That includes their admin, their engineering, pre-treatment lab, ops, operations is ops, central and sewer maintenance. So on their current site, there's a B-five, we call it the B-five building, and a B-two building. B-two building is their control building. That's where they house their lab space and their pre-treatment space. And then there's the B-five building where they have the ops, central maintenance, and admin. The B-two building currently needs some, would need some upgrades. And we did, so we worked with Delkor and we developed a, what we called a master plan. We looked at different alternatives, and we looked at different options for how we can upgrade their facility and improve the current operation. And so what we have here today is the current, the current plan today is actually what we came up with and what was determined to be the most cost-effective and best for both current and future operations. Ultimately, at the end of this project, Delkor wants to provide the best service they can for their users. And by doing these improvements, we feel that this is gonna help operationally them operate more efficiently and also be able to coordinate better and provide better, you know, service to the end user. The, I think that kind of summarized that first slide. We, and one of the, I think one of the highlights, though, I would say, that comes out of this is this is gonna upgrade their lab space. That's where they do their testing. That's where, you know, if they're treating their effluent and they do their testing, having an upgraded lab is always better for the environment and making sure you have better operational procedures, which obviously the operational procedures right now are high, very high quality. But we, you know, like, this proposed improvement is gonna, you know, also improve on current operations. What you see now is an aerial image of the plant. You know, I have a, you know, this is, I think Paul kind of gave a good overview. There's access off of Harwick Street. Delkor has come in previously to improve that access route, construct new pump stations, and construct other improvements. This project is specifically around the admin space, the office space, and the lab areas. If we can go to the next slide. The next slide is what I'm calling an overall site plan. And what that overall site plan is showing is the, the blue areas represent your new building addition areas. The yellow areas, which we'll zoom in on the next slide, represent the renovated areas. So those internal offices in that B-five building are gonna get renovated to further improve on operations. Paul, if you can go to the next slide. And then here's a close-up view. And if, assuming, you know, looking at the north hour, north being top of the page, east to the right, west to the left, to the left of the page where the parking area is, that's the actual control building. It's a, it's a glass, older stuff. It's a, it's a glass, older style, built in the 1980s, glass building, doesn't have much for ADA compliance, needs some new mechanical improvements. That's the building that we're proposing to demolish. So that building will get demolished, and we will add on to the B5 building. The B5 building is a newer building addition that Delkor has constructed. The building addition is going to be, is proposed to be three stories right now. However, based on, based on when the design gets done and we go out for bids, we may only construct just two stories of it, and the third story, it'll be designed for a third story. We want to obviously get approved for a third story and go through the process, but we may end up just constructing two of the stories based on availability of funding. Is that correct, Lavanya? Yep. Lavanya, do you want to touch on anything I said about operations? Do you think I covered it pretty well? Yeah. Just before I go any deeper.
Just to add, Mike already mentioned, we have two buildings where we have operations and lab in one building, engineering and maintenance in the other building, but these, we all operate as a unit. We operate together, so it's not, it is better if we are all together in the same level in space, so it's just improvement of operations as such.
And then to kind of touch base on and go further into what Lavanya said, some of the improvements on this plan also have to deal with the site as well. So expand in the parking area. Right now, if you ever go to Delkor, there's limited parking. Under this plan, we're going to have much more parking. It's going to be, it's going to meet the current, like as Paul mentioned in his review letter, making, showing that how the parking is going to interact with the current number of employees. Under this new plan, it's going to operate much better. It's going to, there's going to be more parking spaces, more available parking to further, you know, access, provide adequate needs for parking for Delkor. There are green space areas that are created, and we will obviously work with the Shade Tree Commission on any comments that they have regarding shade trees. We will comply with the stormwater management ordinances and any other comments that we receive from the engineer. I know there was a comment about a crosswalk. We can make sure we incorporate any of those comments, any signage. But right now, what you're looking at is a, is kind of a sketch, it's a true sketch plan. It's an early stage. We just got through the master plan, and now we want to kick it into, go into full design, where we're going to start working on the details of the structure, the site, the land development. That's all going to move forward, and we thought that the best way to get, get this project moving would, as Paul always recommends, is do a sketch plan submission, just to make sure, get the city aware of it, and also make sure everybody, we get any comments upfront, because the comments do help, and they help us as we are developing the plans and kind of help us mold in the right direction. So that is where we are now. And just to kind of touch base on some of Paul's comments about sustainability, there is a, the architectural plan, if you go to the next page, there is a green roof option, which I, which I got to be clear, it's all going to depend on budget and how the bids come in, but we, we're always open to a white roof option as well for sustainability. And anything, you know, obviously, you know, we welcome any comments that you may have regarding the project. And I would just clearly state that this is more admin, lab, pre-treatment space, really not the actual treatment of Delkor. This is the ad, the admin spaces that we're looking to improve. With that said, that's really all I really have for the presentation today, and I hope to get, if you have any comments, please let me know. I'd hope to, you know, I hope I can answer any comments you may have about the project.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay. I know this one doesn't show it, but where your dumpsters will be?
Oh, the dumpsters. Right now, Lavanya can speak on that, but I believe they're in the loading dock.
Right. They are.
Yes.
I believe if you, it's on the, on the east, if you buy the trucks.
Where the truck is?
Yes. So, and it's private pickup. We would keep it the same.
Okay. How are you going to handle all these renovations? Do you, I mean, are y'all in full operation in the building now?
So that is what, there's options. We will, what we would do is face the blue new as first, so that would keep the existing building under operation, the lab space. We have a full-fledged lab now in that blue area. We moved the lab and all the operations from the old B2 into this blue space, and then we can demolish the existing building.
No disruption. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? And Mr.?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. We submitted our sketch plan review memo dated August 5, 2025. Before I get into it, just one quick question. Are you anticipating any more employees, or is this to better serve the existing number of employees?
No. It is, we are anticipating more employees, and this is to serve future expansion. And this also now, we have more women employee at Delkor than before, so we are also adding a larger women locker space in there.
Engineers?
Engineers and operators.
Women.
All right. Very good. Fantastic. We think this is a great plan. We applaud Delkor for submitting a sketch plan and going through the subdivision land development process. This is one project that I believe has no community impact whatsoever. They could actually petition to ask the Planning Commission and the City Council to waive the subdivision land development process in entirety because of it being an essential utility. However, they move forward with the sketch plan. We provided our engineering comments, dealing with an explanation if you resubmit as a preliminary final plan, explaining the existing number of parking spaces and the proposed number of new employees, and just to show that the parking is going to be adequate throughout the site, not just with your addition. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Madam.
Not at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing the plan in. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yep.
Get out of here. Mike, you got your thumb up, I hope.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Have a good one. See you, everybody.
Take care. All right. So now we're on our discussion and information items. Mr. Fritz.
Yes. Bear with me, I just got to get reconnected here.
Number five, discussion and information items.
Oops.
Status of the subdivision of land.
Yep. Get to that slide.
Is this right here?
Yep, that's wrong. Yep.
Yep.
Well, you may have to, excuse me, I can't get reconnected here, but what I can tell you, as far as...
Want a paper copy?
Pardon me?
Want a paper copy?
I can, I have the screen in front of me, but you just don't have it in front of you, unfortunately. I just can't get connected to these screens, unfortunately. There were two projects that have been on our list for a while, that one was on West Seventh Street. That was the project that never made it across the Planning Commission meeting. They tabled it right before the meeting, the applicant did. And then the other one was actually Mike Alante's project. That was Brett Rose's project, the sign company project. Both those date back to early spring. Obviously, the MPC review deadline came and went, but they've actually, as we've proceeded, given us at least two extensions. So the latest extension, and Susan, you know this, goes to November 12 for both of them. So they're in good shape. We've got their permission to extend the review date, and those are the only ones I think we have to worry about. And just so you know, too, Susan knows this as well, three projects were passed today by City Council. 742 West Front Street Large Warehouse on West Second Street, that was approved. You're shaking your head. Silvercare Senior Housing, and then the Liberty Housing one on Morton Avenue. So we crossed the finish line on that, on those. Now, obviously, they have to meet all our conditions before they get their plans recorded. But I also want to mention, related to that, is that we had Kyle Miller, the city assistant city solicitor, create more refined resolutions, so there's more definition in them, there's a better understanding, hopefully, for City Council when they review these resolutions, and what the waivers were that we had to go through, remember all those motions that we had to read. They see that now, which is really important, I think, just for transparency across the board. So going forward, we've got a better system now, thanks to Kyle, and we, that's part of Ron's recommendations going down the line, too, as well, is just to be more thorough with our resolutions. They used to be just a quick paragraph. Now we're...
Right, and nobody knew what they meant.
And nobody knew what they meant, exactly. And part of the reason we're doing this, too, is like if Kyle, or Kyle, Ron, myself, and Kim are not here, someone could pick up that resolution and realize where they are with the project. So always thinking like that. I think the other thing on my agenda is, part of your packet, I had a proposed zoning amendment that was very focused on one item. And this one item was actually part of the bigger package I gave you a few months ago. I know I've had a conversation with Susan. I know I've had a conversation perhaps with Annette Trilling. I don't know if I have, but what I'm thinking we're going to do is we're going to focus on certain things and try to get them passed sooner than later. And as you know, there's a concern about these tradesmen headquarters or construction headquarters occurring in our mixed-use districts, which includes the W1, all the C1, C2R. Remember, that C2R goes right through West Third Street. We saw a sketch plan for one of these projects. We'd like to address this, because as you read in my memo, what these projects end up being is pole barns with outdoor parking, outdoor storage, which is, we're not against the use, we're concerned about the location of them. Because what we're actually trying to do is what we just saw, like that type of mixed-use housing occurring on the West Third Street corridor. So what I'm proposing is a zoning amendment that addresses that exact subject. So I've actually provided a definition for tradesman headquarters and construction headquarters, and identified the locations where they're preferred, and it really limited to the industrial zones, our LIC, our MIC, and our HIC zoning districts. Now, where are we with this? You are the first ones that have seen this amendment, so even Kyle has not seen this draft. We are at early stages. But what I want you to do is to read this when you can and ask me any questions. You can ask me now, but we want to go through, start getting this process in motion, because I do feel like if we can tackle these things, especially like a topic like this, and just get it, we'll have less questions and less major conversations if we minimize the topic, is my thought. And I think, Susan, you agree with me in that approach.
Yeah.
Again, you can see, it's, it's a three-page amendment. Just imagine what it would be if we had all the other amendments. So I'm also trying to tell you that this still needs to be vetted, still needs to be sent to the county, there still needs to be a discussion with council, which I hope to have in the near future with the Community and Economic Development Committee, which is Councilman Green's committee. And I will let you know when that happens, but for now, you're getting the first look at it and just a preview of what I'm proposing that we do. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah. I'm wondering also, should you, should you give it to the zoning board for review?
I can make them aware of it. In the end, the Planning Commission has to make a recommendation to City Council to consider this amendment. So really, you're the leaders on this, as you should be, because this is really dealing with planning and looking forward. I have no problem making them aware of this amendment, and Kim and I can work on communicating one of them about that.
All right. I read over it. I think it was very thorough.
Okay. Well, again, I'll let you know what Kyle says, or whoever the city solicitor, whoever ends up looking at it, what their comments are, and then we'll keep working on approving it. Yeah.
I could just add one thing. Almost like civics, think of the Planning Commission as a recommending body to City Council, which is part of the legislative branch of the city. The mayor, the executive branch, council with recommendation by the Planning Commission, legislative that you help shape the rules, regulations, and laws of the city. The zoning hearing board is somewhat like a quasi-judicial branch. They don't get to say what the laws are. They just respond to applications and adjudicate whether relief is granted from those laws.
And that, but that's not to say they shouldn't be knowledgeable about the laws.
I understand that, but at the same time, everybody should have the same knowledge, so to speak. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
Sure.
If they're aware of what's in it, then they can make better, better sound decisions, too. Good, well.
Right, and I'm all for communication, so they're prepared to be aware of it.
That's the key, communicate.
Yeah, yeah. But that's a good point, Ron. I appreciate that clarification. All right. So other than that, our next meeting, which I'm assuming we will have, we may have something from the city for September 10. That would be our next meeting, second Wednesday of September. So I think we're on a streak. We haven't missed a month, have we, this year?
No, especially in a summer time.
I, yeah. You guys are going to have to get paid for this, I think, Aaron.
Don't mention that. Okay.
Oh, no. Kim included the by right list. Did you have any comments or questions on that?
So I know a net, that was something, I know...
Demo backfill.
So I wanted to elaborate on two things, because I know they didn't get a by right sheet when Annette was previously on the board, on the commission. But whenever someone gets a permit from us that is by right, they're able to do by right. We just like to let you all know, so you don't just ride past and see a new sign up somewhere. The demo is actually properties that the, that CETA is actually demolishing, and we provided them with permits, so that they'd be able to demo. And all demo permits, applications have to come through zoning so that we can provide them with the list of what the procedures are. Like you might have to make sure you shut off the utilities, make sure they know how to backfill and work, you know, how the process goes, because up to, we all know recently, people have done what they want, so we, they are required to get a zoning permit. So those backfills are from Chester Economic Development Authority, and we submitted them permits, as well as, just one person had a porch that was broken down, and they're rebuilding it. But that's it. But every month, if there's something that happens by right, if I can remember, I'm going to give you the by right sheet.
All permits are blue?
No. Our permits are zoning permits. They're white.
They're white.
Building permits would be blue. Yep. But we are...
Demo permits are blue as well?
You have to get a demo permit for, from LNI.
And it's blue.
And it would be blue.
That's the problem. I think they need to change the colors, because that's, this, that's, that's the caveat with these guys out here. They get a demo permit and they, because it's blue, they post it, and so everybody do what they want after the fact.
Very interesting that you say that. So last month, maybe about three weeks ago, we actually had that conversation based upon inspectors that would ride past, see blue, and keep going, and not necessarily see whether they're doing the work that they were given permissions for. So come in September, they're ordering different card stock with different colors, and each color will signify what that job is, so it will be changing. They're just waiting for the card stock, but that's it. Yep.
What color is in the fourth?
Red.
Red.
Cold red, that's why you stop.
Or stop work order. Perfect.
So if there are any other, then seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All right. It is now 3:29, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Kim?
Good. Oh, go ahead.
All right.
Okay. See you now.
All righty.
That's going to be a good...
All right. Okay, see you now.
All right.
That's going to be a good project, if those folks, once they get that together, though. You know? Grace Manor.
The mixed-use one? I think they need to reduce the scale. I'm not sure. I'm not, is this still being recorded?
We still, we might still be, hold on. We are still on...
I ain't saying nothing, girl. On the grounds, I might even eat myself.
I just wanted to know about this. About the 25th.
You talking about all them tree stuff, that tree place? I'm like, thank you.
I called the lawyers.
Yo, who owns that?
They still turn it off. You.
Yeah, we're talking to you.
You talking about you, sorry. I'm out. We're joking.
Yeah, get him to turn it off.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm out. I'm leaving. Got to go, anyway.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you. So...
That was us giving them instruction on what they demoed, where the back door goes, they kept putting it to the ground. So our demo permits from zoning, give them instruction on making sure all the utilities are turned off, and making sure that they put the back, wherever they're putting it, put it somewhere else above the ground. All that comes on our permit. So you want, we just a little more detail, we just a little more, so people can't say we did it.
Right, and I like that.
A lot more detail.
I mean, you've ever done it.
I'm not going to over it.
Yes. Let him show you.
Chris, can you show us how to turn off the street? My second hand.